Okay, we have a floor, so we're gonna get started. Um, we still have one trustee who needs to join us. So, um, as former village clerk, I will be acting as the village clerk tonight in the absence of Martha Campbell Pruitt, village clerk. And at this time, I take a motion to appoint trustee. Can't hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for letting me put my full spaces. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Um, we're gonna get started, um, 7:03 PM. Um, in the absence of the village clerk, I will be acting as the acting village clerk in, uh, the place of Martha Campbell Pruitt. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint trustee Arnold Coleman as mayor pro temp. So, move it. And, um, excuse me one second. Amber, did I get my papers? No, okay. Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
All eyes.
Thank you, acting madam clerk. Um, I'll now call this meeting to order. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, our Constitution, our God, with the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please do the roll call.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Coleman?
Here.
Trustee Jazinski?
Here.
Trustee Burns?
Here.
Trustee Williams. And trustee Grant is absent.
Uh, at this time, we would have public comments. All questions and comments shall be directed to the acting mayor. Each speaker may comment on matters pertaining to the agreement, the agenda items only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. The mayor will respond to the questions, um, once all public comments have concluded.
State your name, please.
Larry Satt.
You're mine.
It's good to see a new mayor. My comment tonight is, uh, regarding, uh, the, the concert and, uh, people talking about conflict of interest. We have, uh, this gentleman over here who robs us all the time through lawsuits, talking about conflict of interest because the trustee's husband happens to be a DJ. He's a professional. He should be able to do it. This is a one-year concert. If you wanna talk about conflict of interest, I remember a sitting trustee who had a brother working full-time for the village. I didn't have a problem with that, and none of you guys had a problem with it either. We didn't consider that conflict of interest. But what I do consider conflict of interest is an event that's going on right here today, and that's what you guys need to be sounding the alarm about. We have a person over in the counter. Do we know that the accounting department, at least, so it's said that they're under investigation for the theft of, we know $10,000 is missing. We don't know the actual number of whether it's 78,000 or 178,000, because we can't find out, because bank raids and audits have been done. Now, where the conflict of interest comes in it, it's why we're under investigation, trying to find out where our money is. You promote the very person that's under investigation to be in charge of more of our money, more of our bank account. That's conflict of interest, and that's what we need to be sounding alarm about, and Mr. Larratt need to be on top of that. He has to cry one time because the mayor's involved. He don't say nothing about this kind of money, but he make posts all day about, "We have the one-year event," and now they crying about conflict of interest because we got two homegrown DJs. Why shouldn't they be able to perform if they're qualified to do so? Thank you. Are there any more comments or questions, suggestions?
Yes. And of course, I am Francine Anderson, and I'm at 1606 216th Street. I would like to ask the three trustees that, uh, agreed in calling this meeting, what was your purpose? Because everything I see here could have been taken care of in a regular meeting. So, why is it necessary that we have such an urgency to have such a call meeting, of course, that we were notified two days in advance? Which is the proper thing for a public notice. So, but my question is, why is such an urgency? Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, can I ask those questions to be addressed by those three signatures that were given for the approval of this meeting?
Any, any more, uh, comments?
Yes.
Questions, any more questions or comments? All, all response, all responses to today's comments will be directed to the mayor, and will be given to the mayor to examine and to comment on.
And Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, you are not using the question. That is directly to the three trustees.
Respectfully, um, I'm asking that there be no counter replies.
They never called, you know?
Okay, we're moving on to item agenda number three. There's a, I will entertain a motion to approve Selton Fox County to complete the audits for the village of South Village for the fiscal years of 2020, 2021, and 2021-2022.
So, second.
It's been moved by trustee Bell and seconded by trustee Shazinski. Uh, madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Grant, absent. Trustee Williams, yes.
Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to the co-chair, the HR consultant agreement between Sonya Douglas and the village of South Village, whether it be in writing or verbal, to be declared null and void.
So, second.
It's been moved by Shazinski, trustee Shazinski, and seconded by trustee Bell. I'll hear the roll call.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant, absent.
Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to post the position of part-time HR consultant who will work during the village of South Village's regular business hours.
So, move it.
Moved by, moved by trustee Shazinski and seconded by trustee Bell. Uh, madam clerk, can you call the roll, please?
We also want to, uh, I want to make sure that, I want to be able to seek counsel on something regarding the HR position. Am I allowed to do that?
Yes.
Uh, attorney, can you instruct us as far as the HR position? We want to be able to, uh, do ordinance for the HR position because we want to change the language. We need an HR person that's here during the day and during working hours. Is that something, uh, can you speak to that, attorney? McGrath?
It is allowed under your code.
Yeah, we have to get a mic because it's raining.
Yes, that's specifically allowed under your village code, uh, to set the terms and conditions of, uh, employment. Uh, certainly hours of, uh, reporting to work and working, uh, can't be put into an ordinance, and, you know, we can draft that. I would also have a contract for the, uh, HR director also.
Okay, thank you.
So, does the motion have to be amended, or does it stand as it state, as it was stated? It's now a motion to post a position, so we're amending the motion, or how, how are we handling this?
If the, if you want to motion to post a position, you can. Uh, I would add on to it, though, that, uh, there should be an ordinance drafted to, uh, set the parameters of when, uh, this, uh, HR director will work at the, the village. Uh, and per, uh, an ordinance that was passed years ago, uh, there should be a contract with whoever's in that position.
Thank you.
So, for clarity, for the clerk's sake, is it a motion to post a position for part-time HR who will work during the village, or South Village's regular work hours? That was motioned and seconded? What should, are you saying we should add to that motion to also direct a legislative council to draft an employee contract for HR director personnel?
And draft an ordinance. I would ask whoever made the motion?
Okay.
And whoever seconded it to amend their motion and, uh, second the amended motion to include, uh, all of those provisions.
Yes, ma'am. You need a mic because the rain is really keeping us from...
I'm gonna wait till you get a mic because we need to hear what you have to say.
I'll give her the, the mic, but actually, to draft legislation on behalf of, uh, the legislative body of, uh, the village, uh, is within the purview of legislative council.
Uh, but you're asking for somebody to draft a contract. Contract, so drafting legislation is correct. That's within the purview of legislative council. Um, he is also, as I said, I did, I'm not going to curtailate my legal memo, which you guys have in your possession.
So, okay.
Um, but to draft a contract would be within the purview of your corporation council, and the way that your legislative council ordinance was drafted, because you're not supposed to infringe on the duties of your corporation council, it would be your corporation council that review drafts and reviews any contracts you have with consultants.
So, how would you recommend that this motion be stated? Because we're going to ask trustee, um, Jazinski and trustee Bell to amend their motion, or to rescind it and restate it?
You can, um, it would, it would just be, what you're asking to do would be an amendment, and it would be to, uh, direct legislative council to amend the ordinance, and then to have corporation council draft a contract. Honestly, you're almost taking six, 10 steps ahead. Um, if, if the intent is to amend the ordinance, I would just amend the, amend the, um, motion to include instructing legislative council to amend the ordinance. Then, once you have somebody, um, if, if that, that would be a contract, then if, if that would address that at that time, there's no real need to...
Don't address the contract.
Well, I, I would just say that you have a person in this position. There was a contract. I would agree that, uh, the village attorney can work off of the contract that this person already was working under, and just add the provision that, uh, that the person has to work during the regular business hours of the village. Uh, I'm not here just to take any work away from anyone, but if there was a contract, it's a simple, uh, addition to that contract that, uh, the person who's in the position worked under before, if you just, if you want that provision in the contract, uh, the same as you can draft it and, and get it, uh, to the mayor and the board, and you can have it.
I'll have a conference. There is, there's multiple legal issues beyond that, um, that I will have to have a conversation with Mr. McGrath, and I don't know that it's appropriate for, uh, open for, for right now. Um, but the definition of an employee versus a consultant, and the, and the powers of control over that individual, um, in a contract would indicate that it's a consultant and not an employee, but there's a whole long test. So, there are some additional issues with, with directing hours.
Now, you have to everybody speak up, because I'm having a problem, so I know everybody else is having a problem, and it doesn't help that we have a thunderstorm going on, so I need you all to please speak into your mic and speak loudly, because I can't even hear you.
Okay, and, and I'm going off on a, uh, a tangent, but to answer your simple question, uh, whether or not you have to amend your motion if you want to include that trustee Burns, it would be that you are, you would be amending the motion to, uh, to, to ask legislative council to amend the ordinance. However, it, it, it's up to the board as to how they want to proceed. May I ask you?
I will, uh, allow trustees Jazinski, uh...
Jazinski.
Jazinski, thank you. And trustee, um, trustee Bell to amend and rescind their motions.
I understand.
I'm gonna send my second.
So, I would like for counsel, the motion's been amended, I would like, uh, attorney McGrath to speak again of what we are intending to do with the motion.
I think the motion should be, if you wanna post for the position, you're free to, uh, make a motion to post for the position. Uh, so it could be a combined motion, that, uh, you're going to post the position of HR director.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you are going to request legislative council to draft the ordinance for that provision, for that position, and you're going to ask the village attorney to draft the contract for that position, which is, uh, just following the, the existing ordinance that's in place.
Corporate council in agreement with that? I, I have to have a motion that's accurate. Uh, the village clerk required me to do that. Are we in agreement?
It's, 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 uh, yeah, that would be a, I don't know, that might, oh, there it works, it's like...
There we go.
Um, that, that would cover what trustee Burns is trying to do, correct?
Um, I'm sorry, there's a tendency for, um, for your voice to lower at the end of the sentence, so, and I lose the last part of the...
The, the, the motion as dictated by attorney McGrath does cover what trustee Burns is asking to do.
We have to restate it, or we're gonna take a vote at this time?
You would need a second because both of the original motions were rescinded, so if that is the motion that trustee Burns is making, you would need a second. Once you have a second, you can then do discussion, or if there's no discussion, call roll.
Okay. Okay, I will ask for a second to the motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Trustee Burns, you made the motion, so it needs to be a separate or different, uh, trustee to second your motion.
All right.
It was moved by trustee Burns and seconded by trustee Bell. Uh, madam clerk, could you call the roll?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Burns, absent.
Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the vendors' list for June 17th, 2023, the South Village Juneteenth and Father's Day Festival identified below. Flash Productions invoice, uh, one of $4,675. Bullet Entertainment invoice of $800. New Experience Productions amount of $12,000, no, $1,225. Vision Marketing invoice of $1,000. ABC Floats invoice of $640. Portable Toilets invoice of $420. Fire Department invoice of $328. Police Department invoice of $1,750. Ambulance invoice of $800. Jeffrey Burns invoice of $250. David Smith invoice of $250. New Experience Productions invoice of $500, for a total cost of $23,276.
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by, uh, Jazinski, trustee Jazinski, and seconded by trustee Bell. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yes, and I want to make sure that I, uh, for, for line item 10 for the festival, for Mr. Jeffrey Burns invoice for $250, I want to abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
You want to strip it? You want to strike it?
Just for me only.
Mayor Pro Temp, I, I, my question is, um, trustee Burns, these are the deposit amounts, not the full amounts, but the full amount for, uh, the June would be the $23,276.
That is correct.
But the, the amounts listed are for the deposits that you'd like to be, um, paid on the next accounts paid.
That is correct.
And you're abstaining for the record on number 10.
That is correct.
Okay.
I thought we said last night we were in the fire department and police department, we just come out payroll.
It will be noted that the fire department, the police department, and the ambulance service will, uh, they are only listed here for budget line items only. They will be, uh, deducted out of regular payroll. And I wanted to make that, that clear.
So, for clarification, for the clerk's records, the items that are listed are the amounts of the 50% deposit, but the fire department, the police department, and ambulance will be invoiced at the time of services?
That is correct.
So, we are not making a motion to approve those 50%?
That is correct.
Deposits, okay. And item number 10, um, can the trustee abstain from one item, or she abstains from the whole thing? Because the next motion is to approve those deposits. Should she abstain from the whole motion on number seven?
What you can do is you can remove one of line items and then vote on that separately. So, um, and I apologize, is there, is there currently a motion on the table to approve all, all of it?
Right now, we're just, we're, we're, the motion is to, um, on the floor to approve the vendors' list at the dollar amounts, but the dollar amounts listed are the deposit amounts, the full amount of the concert. Do you have an agenda?
I have it in front of me.
Okay, so if you look at the, the total cost of $23,276, that's the total amount of the June concert, but what's listed is the deposits, which is gonna be approved in the next motion. So, for the matter of the record, this is all of the vendors and the deposits of 50%.
Um, I would suggest amending the motion to not include the vendor that is, uh, Jeffrey Burns, and then, um, voting on that separately, and so that way she can abstain. I mean, if she would like to abstain from the entire motion, she does have that, that option, um, and it probably would be recommended in this case, uh, just considering, for, to make it, to make it cleaner.
The easiest thing is just for you to abstain from, from the whole poll.
Yes.
And another question, um, for a matter of record, as we stated, the fire department, police department, and ambulance do not require a 50% deposit because they will be tied, paid at the time of service. So, when we made the motion on number seven, should we also remove them from the, um, from the motion? Because they're paid in-house at the time of service.
Right. You're using your own, well, you're using your own existing departments or contracts. Um, though it sounds like this is also for the, well, it's to pay the vendors, who to pay, so there's no deposit then needed for those vendors.
Right.
Um, yeah, so there's, there's no reason to approve that at this time.
Okay.
So, both of you two...
We have a motion to second, to approve the vendors themselves, so we can...
So, currently, we have, we have a proper motion on the floor now?
Yes.
Is that correct? Attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll ask for a vote.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Abstain.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant, absent.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve payment to the vendors for June 17th, 2023, Juneteenth and Father's Day Festival as identified in six above. 50% deposit of $12,638 to be paid within seven days and the balance at the end of the event.
So, second.
It's been moved by trustee Jazinski and seconded by trustee Bell.
Question, clerk?
Are there any questions?
Yes. Uh, now that we're removing the fire department and the police department and the ambulance, we have to amend that total of $12,638, correct? We're removing those. We're not making those, uh, down payments. So, you're doing the math, trustee Burns?
Twenty-eight, seventy-eight.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight, seventy-eight. That's what you're taking off.
We're taking off 28, 78 for the fire department, police department, and ambulance, and deducting that from 12,638. Which is the balance of? $9,760?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're asking for then is to, do we have to amend that motion? Because we made it for the full amount? Maybe ask them to rescind their motions and start over?
If you could just clarify also, I, I think you misread the, uh, the agenda, that the, the payment's gonna be made at the time of the event. I, I, you might've said at the end of the event.
At the time of the event. At the time of the event, okay.
At the time of the event, okay. Um, I'll ask for, I will, I would ask, um, give you permission to amend or rescind your motions.
I understand.
So, you're rescinding as well, trustee Bell?
Yes.
Okay, then you're gonna make the new motion to do that one now?
Yes. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve payment to the vendors for June 17th, 2023, Juneteenth and Father's Day Festival as identified in, in item six above. 50% deposit of $9,760 to be paid within seven days and the balance at the end of the event.
The time of it, that's the time of it.
At the, I apologize, at the time of the event.
So, second.
It's been moved by trustee Jazinski and seconded by trustee Bell. Madam clerk?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Abstain.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant is absent.
Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the vendors' list for July 1st, 2023, South Village Summer House Music Festival identified as below. Flash Productions invoice $5,000. New Experience Production invoice $1,800. Fireworks invoice $1,250. Ambulance invoice $800. Portable Toilets invoice $420. David Smith invoice $250. Jeffrey Burns invoice $250. New Experience Productions invoice of $500, with a total cost of $25,696.
That's in the next motion. Yes, but you're ready for the next motion. He's got the figures ready for the next motion from the, your wing, fire, police, and ambulance. Okay? But for this motion, though, we need, we, we need to complete, complete this motion first.
Come on.
Okay?
It's moved by trustee Bell and seconded by trustee Jazinski. Madam clerk?
Thank you. Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Abstain.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant is absent.
Motion carried. Item number nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve payment to vendors for July the 1st, 2023, South Village House Music Summer Festival as identified in...
In amended?
In the amended amount of...
$22,316. We're talking about the, um, deposits right now. Did you, did you deduct that from the deposit amount?
Yes, deduct that from the deposit.
Okay. Trustee Burns?
$9,260.
$9,260 is the correct amount to amend the motion?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
$9,260.
Okay, um...
Patch the motion, I'm sorry.
I will entertain the motion to approve payment to the vendors for July 1st, 2023, South Village House Music Summer Festival as identified in agenda eight, agenda item number eight above. 50% deposit in the amount of $9,260 to be, to be paid within seven days and the balance to be paid at the time of the event.
We need to make a correction, $9,470. That's for July 1st. $9,470 for July.
Okay, I'll restate the motion.
$9,470.
Okay, I'll restate the motion. Motion to approve payment to vendors for July 1st, uh, South Village House Music Summer Festival as identified in item eight above. 50% deposit in the amount of $9,470 to be paid within seven days and the balance to be paid at the time of the event. It was moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Jazinski. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Abstain.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant, absent.
Motion carried. Um, okay, I'll, I'll entertain them. I'll move for, excuse me. I move to, I'll entertain a motion to table, uh, item agenda number 10 to, uh, to the next board meeting. Oh, to a time undetermined. It's moved by trustee Bell. Do I have a second? It's been second by trustee Jazinski. Uh, madam clerk?
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Grant is absent.
Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Jazinski. All in favor? Those opposed?
I...
Motion carried. Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Get home safe, everyone, please.